Subcommittee on Diversity, Inclusion, and Minority Women-Owned Business Enterprises to Order. We will take up the following items for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes of the November 14, 2022, meeting. I move the approval of action item 1A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Item approved. There being no further items on the agenda, we will move now to the information items. Information item 2A is a report on the CUNY faculty demographics. Vice Chancellor of University Human Resources, excuse me, Dorian Gloria will provide further information.
Thank you.
Is your mic on?
So last time, we looked at a number of demographic pieces of information that were on the cusp of being old because we update our data every year in November, when is when we typically have the highest number of employees. So we have just updated the data. So we're going to go through the same data, but the numbers are now updated as of November 22. Reminder that everything that we look at here and then a whole bunch more is available on our websites, and you can go in and slice and dice things a number of different ways. So we're going to look at just a few different groupings because, as I said, there's many of them available. The first thing we're looking at is full-time instructional staff. And I want to just call your attention to how the chart is laid out because they're all this way, and so it might just help you to hone in on certain things. So we have females at the line across the top, we have total minority in the highlighted line, and then totals across the bottom. So one of the trends I think you'll see consistently, and it's not unique to CUNY, of course, is the bottom-line numbers.
You're covering your microphone with the computer. Sorry. There you go. No, we couldn't hear you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So we're starting with instructional staff, full-time, and I was just pointing out that the top line is female and the highlighted line is total minority, and these are all numbers as of November 2022. And you'll see across the bottom, a trend that is very common, mostly due to COVID and a number of other things that have occurred, but not unique to CUNY certainly, is the totals. So in 2020, we had 14,000, that dropped to 13,700, and now we are recovering. So we are at 14,029 in this particular category. You'll see that we've stayed consistent in terms of female representation as well as the total minority, so consistent over those three years, even though total numbers have You'll stop me if there's anything you want me to dig deeper into, please. Okay, this is the instructional staff, and it is broken down. So we have full-time faculty, we have ECP, which for this purpose is included under instructional staff, we have the Higher Education Officers or the HEO series, and then we do have other instructional staff. And remember, we're looking strictly at full-time here. But again, you'll see a consistent pattern where we have 2020 was a drop, then it dropped some more, and then it's coming back up in 2022. Again, we remain consistent with our representation. In some cases, we actually went up. So for example, ECP's total minority went up in 2022. Other than that, we've mostly stayed consistent, both in total minority and in female representation for instructional staff titles. Okay, quick look at our classified staff. So again, same thing. We had, well, here we are, 2020, we went down to 2021, however, we went down again in 2022. So this is a category that actually has declined over the last two years by about 8%. Total minority has stayed consistent, however, at 75 across the three years, and same thing with female, has stayed consistent at the 41, even though, again, our total overall numbers have gone down. These are the groups that make up our classified staff. We have our white collar, the skilled trades, the blue collar, and the stage and theater group. And you can see, again, similar pattern. The numbers have gone down a little bit each year in each of these groups. In terms of how we have remained in our total minority and in female, again, we have managed to stay consistent there despite the overall decline in the total population. Take a look at the professoriate. Here we're looking at full-time faculty by rank, and it does include substitutes, visiting, and research faculty titles, and this is a look university-wide. We're looking only at university-wide for this purpose, but remember, again, if you want to see, or if you go to the website, you will be able to see all of these numbers for each campus, and you can dig down quite a bit there. But here, we're looking at university-wide faculty by rank. And if you look in the middle, again, the highlighted number is the total minority numbers as well as the percentage, and I think that you will see that the percentage, particularly an assistant professor, has continued to go up, and the others actually have all increased in the minority group as well, just not quite by quite as much. I'll point out, we have a column here called Italian-American, just to remind people that Italian-Americans are considered a protected category here at CUNY, and so you will see them, that category, reported separately. When we file our affirmative action plans, we file two separate plans because Italian-Americans are not considered a protected group by the federal plans. And then here's our non-professoriate as well, again, the middle bar. And we have remained fairly consistent here, slight increases in the numbers in the total minority group, but essentially pretty consistent across the three years. And again, you'll see the Italian-American group separate on the right. Before I leave the numbers, I just want to point out that, of course, much of this has to do with people self-identifying, and we offer people the opportunity to do that, but not everybody does. And so the numbers that we have are based, of course, only on the information that we actually gather and that people willingly provide. We will be coming up on the need for a self-ID campaign. We haven't done one in quite some time, so probably within the next year, we should look at doing a self-ID campaign. This is usually something that we capture when people come in, but it's a good practice to also ask for it periodically because sometimes people, it can change, or people may decide they want to identify when they didn't before, and of course, yes, you always risk that some people would decide they no longer want to identify, but that doesn't happen as often, although it would be very good if we could get a higher percentage of employees to self-identify. Okay, I'm going to go on to some of the programmatic side. Last time, I presented this slide. Today, I want to focus on the last three items, the diversity conference, the diversity dialogues, and the centralized complaint reporting portal or tool. Okay, the diversity conference is coming up this week. It's Thursday and Friday. I hope that some or all of you will be able to stop by. This year, we had a departure from the past in that we are, ironically enough, trying to be more inclusive. So it is less geared toward faculty and more geared toward really an overview of employees, faculty, nonfaculty, and we even have some students involved this year in a poster session that will be going on during the reception on Thursday evening. We've got 55 concurrent sessions running, so it will be quite active and busy, and it will be live, which we haven't done for a few years. So we will have several hundred people at the Grad Center, and the presentations run the gamut, and some of them are panels, some of them are one-on-ones, and definitely, like I said, I hope that some of you can find some time to get to the Graduate Center. We're also highlighting the work of Breji this year, the Black and Racial Ethnic Studies Initiative, and we'll be highlighting that 12 of the panels will be from Breji. And then our final event will be Breji's kickoff event to a separate conference, so it'll actually be a really nice cohesion, and so we're looking forward to that. Now, this conference runs every other year. It's that big of a lift that we just can't do it every year.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Gloria. Any questions or thoughts to proceed? Hearing none, information item 2B is the CUNY supplier. I'm sorry, I...
That's okay.
Please.
Just quickly, hi, thank you, Vice Chancellor Gloria. The professoriate numbers and the instructional staff numbers that you presented include, unassuming, the lecture initiative of fall 2022?
I'm sorry, you assume they include what?
That the numbers include the lecture initiative from fall?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
As long as, yeah, full-time.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
That's it. Thank you.
Then we'll proceed to information item 2B is the CUNY Supplier Diversity Program. Chief Procurement and Supplier Diversity Officer Martin Sterling will make a presentation on the program.
Thank you, Trustee Wilkins. Let me know when it cuts up. Thanks for the word. Yep. Okay, so I would like to start with an announcement. I'm pleased to share that Ali Banks has joined us today, his first day, as the new Supplier Diversity Director. Ali has an impeccable resume and background, really. He joins from NTE, as I mentioned, and I'm really excited. I truly believe, CUNY, we're lucky to have Ali with us, and so please join me in welcoming Ali and wishing success at career in CUNY. Welcome, Ali. With that, I wanted to remind this committee the overall mission of this program and this office. I think it captures the essence of what we want to accomplish, which is essentially we want to promote business with MWBS and SDBOBs, help them thrive, and really have a world-class supplier diversity program and be recognized as a leader in this space. With that said, I want to cover a little bit about numbers. I'm sharing with you the trend of the last three years, just to provide some context. As you can see, the trend is positive. We are struggling a little bit with the SDBOBs numbers, but the good news is they're trending positive, especially in year-to-date Q3 of this fiscal year. I'm happy to share with you that we have, in the first three quarters, we have reached the levels of the full year of last year. So that's really good news, and it's not participation, but net dollars spent with diverse vendors. So that's, from a trend perspective, is looking promising. Again, there's more work to be done on the SDBOB side, and of course, with MWBS, so we're hoping to get closer to the target. Now, since we're talking about metrics and reporting, I wanted to provide some additional information and really details about how the reporting process works and some additional information. So first, for both MWBS and SDBOBs, the fiscal year goes from April to March of the following year. And so they are one quarter behind CUNY because, as you know, our fiscal year is July to June of the next year. So the annual goal plan is due for MWBS is due on January 15. For SDBOBs, it's on January 31st. That's where we describe what we estimate that we can accomplish based on last year's activity, the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, big projects that may drive traffic, contracts, all that stuff is taken into consideration, and then we come up with an annual goal plan that is discussed with Empires State Development and with SDBOB's office as well. After that, then, we have to report utilization on a quarterly basis, January, April, July, and October. The 15th is due the MWB information, and then the 31st of each month, and of course, April will be 30th, is due the SDBOB information. For the first, for MWB, we have to provide disbursements, that's actually payments and workforce utilization reports, and for SDBOBs, we have to provide information about awards, that's contracts or POs established with SDBOBs, as well as disbursements, payments, and the waivers. So MWB, the state has a system to report particularly MWB spend, which is what I'm showing a screenshot here. This is, we have to produce a report from CUNY first, our ERP, that it's based on parameters that we receive from ESD. We upload this information into that system, and then ESD validates the information to make sure that it's accurate first, and then that each line, the interface with their financial system, and so they validate that what we're sending is actually correct. So if we want to drill down a little bit, we can go in each one of these lines or records, and so we can see the vendor name, whether it's a prime or a sub, what is the category of their certification, is it women's business or is it minority business, the PO number, what kind of commodity or service or construction, what's the category of the spend. And so we can look into all of these things, and then at the end, when they get the green check means that the state has validated that all this information is accurate, and that line is valid again. And the last thing that they check, the certification, as you can see towards the middle of the page, they show when do they have the certification, when it's valid until, and so, of course, it has to be active. If for some reason it lapses, then obviously that record is no longer valid, and it's, you know, it's taken out of the report. So it's a fairly, I would say, comprehensive reporting system that they have for MWBS, for SDBOBs, they require a little bit more information, but it's still, there's no system in place yet, so it's more of a sharing information, but with no specific system as of now. So that's in, I would say, high level, the way we report, the frequency and the system that we use. So if there's any question, of course, you can tell me at any time. The other thing that I wanted to cover today is I wanted to give you all an update on where we are with the conference. You know, we haven't done this annual conference for diverse suppliers since 2019, that was the last edition, so this is the first one that we're going to do ever since. So of course, we're very excited about it. It's scheduled for May 24th, that's a Wednesday. We're going to do it at John Jay College, and so we have sent the communication of the safety date to several organizations and associations. We're trying to include more and incorporate more and just really make everyone know about what we're doing. We extended invitations to the governor's office, to the mayor's office. We're hoping to have representation, and at this point, we're in the final steps of financing the agenda and the event website, which hopefully we will go live within the next day or two. The agenda would include activities, sessions, workshops, panels, meetups with vendors, and so it was primarily designed after a focus group that we did with about 20 vendors, so of course, minority vendors, where we asked very specific questions about what they wanted to see, what they found useful from other events, what they didn't, and so we really wanted to make this work for everybody, especially for them. So based on that, we're finalizing the activities that hopefully will be mostly helpful for the vendor community. So we expect pretty good attendance, both from colleges' representatives, purchasing directors, primes, prime contractors, agencies, and of course, all the vendor's community. That's where we are on that front. Some highlights, general highlights, as I mentioned, the metrics are tracking pretty well so far. We're seeing growth on SDBOBs, particularly in the third quarter of this fiscal year. The final numbers are going to be available once we complete the fiscal year, but it's looking better. The state data migration to CUNY Buy, that is essentially the certification of all the vendors. It's now communicating with our system overnight, every day at midnight, so we know pretty much in real time when a vendor has an active and valid certification. Before, we didn't have that. We were relying mostly on Excel spreadsheets that may or may not be accurate. So right now, if the vendor is showing us a valid certificate, then it's no question that it is. So that was completed back in January for all of the three databases. We have three vendor databases for state funds, city funds, and non-tax levy. Really quick, in the Mentor Protege Program updates, we have two major MPPs programs. One is with Granger as a mentor and Edge Electronic as a protege. We are in the final year of this program. They are kind of graduating, if you will, from the program, and we are moving into, transitioning rather, into the new protege that we expect to have onboard sometime over the next three months. So that's on the Granger side. On the CDW, we have five partners under that program. We completed plans for year one and two, and now they're finalizing the steps to incorporate their catalogs to our e-marketplace in CUNY Buy, which is going to be, is very important to us because it's going to automate the entire process, procurement process, like we have with the rest of the vendors. Now, the last thing that I wanted to cover is I wanted to give you an update on the events that we have participated this year, actually, this fiscal year, and of course, we're planning on doing more or less the same thing. These events are, for the most part, annual. So we did citywide procurement fair back in September as an exhibitor. We participated in an MWB forum in Albany as a sponsor and exhibitor. We did government procurement conference, just an attendee. Competitive Edge, sponsored exhibitor. Then we did Fall '22 Government Business Expo in LaGuardia, sponsored exhibitor, and then the last one we did was Veterans VetCon in November of last year in Albany, also sponsored exhibitor. And of course, now is cherry on top, our own event that we're very, very excited to host. And so again, we expect to participate in this, the same amount of events, if possible more, if there are more. And so that's what I have for today. If you have any questions, happy to address. Thank you, Trustee Wilkins. Back to you.
Any? Yes.
I have a few. Thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions. You were answering them as they went on, so I'm glad I didn't interrupt you. This is really exciting, and I just wanted to learn a little bit more about it. In terms of getting the word out, you know, are we also working with like chambers of commerce or business associations that may be helping businesses certify themselves, which I'm sure there's a lot of programs, that could also, we could also share these opportunities to attend our conference?
Yes. So we are working with the event planner, the Berman Group, so we have reached out to 25 associations, but I know there are many, many more. So we could use all the help that we can get. So any additional organizations that we haven't reached out yet, I would definitely use that information because we really want to reach out to as many people as possible.
But you've reached out to the chambers of commerce?
Yes, yes, but the list, I mean, it keeps growing, and we have a very comprehensive list that we have initial. We added a lot more, but there's still, no matter how many more we add, there's always something that we're missing. So we really want to make sure that we're reaching out to all of them.
I'm happy to share a few that will most likely be on the list, but that makes it easier than for you having to, you know, send whatever to make sure that they're on.
Yes.
Right, you never know if it's missed. The other question I had was, you know, what type of suggestions did the vendors that you talked to in that small group make that felt that would be helpful in incorporating in what we're doing in the new one? You know, just thought, I was curious.
That's, yeah, that's a good question. So what they wanted, that there's, I would say that there's two main comments, there were many, but the two main comments is they really wanted to be educated, especially in small companies, how to deal with CUNY. Sometimes it could be overwhelming. They want to understand what is it that they need to do to not fail in a solicitation or be disqualified for some reason, and what are the nuances that can get you out of the race or, you know, not win, not necessarily disqualification. So that's, we're putting together a workshop to teach them step-by-step, the dos and don'ts. What, this is how, what you have to do in order to be successful, and this is what you don't have to do because that's likely. And the other one is they wanted to have meetups, one-on-ones with the, not the decision-makers because there's no decision-makers, but the people that actually have the information about projects. That's why we're doing the meetups in the afternoon with all the primes and the purchasing directors from all the colleges, where the website will give the vendors the opportunity, first come, first served, to set up meetings. It's more of a speed dating, something like that, where they have 10 minutes and they pitch, you know, and they get to hear directly from the purchasing people what are the projects in the pipeline and where they can participate.
I love that.
One other point, Trustee. We, obviously, yes, we have reached to all five chambers of commerce, and by the way, if you happen to know the Commissioner of the Department of Business, Small Business, you can put in a plug for us.
He's busy.
That would be extremely helpful, but put in that aside for a minute. Put in that aside for a minute. I think that the other thing that we're going to make sure, that I think is a point that Trustee Wilkins has raised with us, is how do you navigate CUNY, right? And to make sure that that is something that we say at the end, we try to figure out ways because I think that we are a very complicated and sometimes bureaucratic system, word that I don't like, but challenging system, and so as a way that we're going to put a lot of emphasis on that, and I think that's a theme that we've heard throughout...
Yeah, loud and clear.
Throughout some of the conversations we've had.
I love that, and I really love the speed dating piece of it because if you think about it, I mean, it may not be something you could do with every single person, but those that take advantage of that, it's really, like, you go to these conferences... what makes you different? It's having that opportunity to kind of grow. I just have one more question, if I may. And it's, how do we reverse engineer this? You know how we're looking for our students to end up in jobs? So we talk to corporations to see what jobs they need for us to support. How do we do that in the opposite? What are some of the areas where there's a lot of opportunity that we know we're going to be spending money in, that we can, on the flip side, work with that helps certify these minority groups? So that we can target some of these groups and kind of proactively, you know, help? So like, for us to communicate, like, hey, here are the big parts, and I don't know how we do this, but that we know we're going to look for people, and we don't have as many groups so that we know. Like if I'm Connet, I know I need contractors in a certain level to fit this criteria. What would be some of our criterias that we can highlight? I'm not answering, I'm not asking that question. I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
So that we could then share with them, that they can, maybe if the city has money that they're supporting these businesses, they can say, hey, these are areas where we see that there's big needs that we can emphasize and kind of reaching out to make sure to support those minority businesses to really, you know, add to become vendors.
No, I think that's an excellent point, and obviously, something we should be doing after, you know, sort of right after the conference, to try to sort of connect, particularly, I mean, the chambers of commerce are a very interesting group that we should be able to tap in a little bit more to, more to come there. But I think we should definitely come back to you with something there. I think that's an excellent, good point.
That's all I had. Sorry. Thanks, Kevin.
First, I want to commend you guys for fixing the technology. It sounds like you're able to get the real-time data, which is so critical. And so thank you for working on that. I would just say, for the highlights, when you put it out here, I think it's also really good, all these positive numbers and the fact that the dollar amounts are trending up. I think what might be helpful for future presentations is if you could also break it down a little bit for the number of vendors. Because, you know, the dollar amounts is one part of the equation. The other part is the utilization rate and how many MWBEs that are actually certified are getting contracts and new, how many new ones are getting contracts? Because that's one of the metrics that a lot of the advocates seem to look at. So that would just be helpful. And I'm sure they're pretty good based on the dollar amounts. But then the final aspect, that's the big discussion these days, is the disparity within the disparity. So I know from the city side, what we're looking at is you're finding that even within the minority groups, that certain communities are not getting the types of contracts at the rate that other communities are getting. So there's been some policy set around that. But so it would be helpful also if you could break it down a little bit for MBEs, you know, minority business enterprises, as opposed to just the women business enterprises? And then breaking it down like we did in the previous discussion about the faculty and the staff? And if you could break it down a little bit, just to take a deeper dive look? And you already have that data, so it's really just.
We do.
Just showing it out.
And it's, it's my plans. Let me just say that it's my plan. We do have information we need to, unfortunately, it doesn't come as ready to, you know, be broken down as easy as I wanted, but it's my plan. And I'm hoping that for the next meeting, we're going to have a breakdown of these numbers and hopefully the full year. But with this breakdown, it's something that I have discussed with.
Yeah, and the last thing is I would just, you know, the citywide MWB procurement fair in September at Barclays Center, where we had 700 companies and thousands of people show up. So our agency did that, and we're happy to communicate, if you haven't already, with the people who organized that from our team, and just to give best practice ideas. And we can just share some more ideas on how to make your conference the best one, our conference the best one.
I mean, one point on the, the deeper dive on the numbers. I mean, I think that what's good about getting those numbers would be that then we could begin to sort of address what we haven't, where we're not sort of meeting the goals. I mean, there's an overall goal, right? But then, if you start breaking those numbers, we might be stronger in one area than other areas. And I think that, that being able to have those numbers will allow us to be a little bit more targeted. It might be something we're doing as an agency that's not, you know, that's not allowing these vendors to come into our space and be able to secure that. I mean, one of the things that I want to just give credit, when the chancellor got here, we did something that I thought, we did this whole mentoring thing that I think has been successful. I, you know, I think we need to take that a step further now, because even though we've now graduated some people from being mentees to mentors, we want to make sure that that continues. And I don't, I'm not sure that we kind of done a good enough job there. So it's making sure that that gets disbanded a little bit more.
With that, first of all, thank you, Vice Chancellor Batista, and thank you, our Chief Procurement Officer and Supplier Martin Sterler. And know that, just overall, knowing that, number one, New York as a state and New York as a city, thank you, Commissioner Kim, is leading the nation for chancellor, for MWBE programs, and also reaching out and doing what's necessary for SDVOB. And the importance of that, we are now realizing that the economic empowerment and the engines lie with the small businesses for New York and many other cities and states across the nation. And we're seeing now, this is our second meeting, and we're realizing what the opportunities are. And we keep pulling back the curtain and seeing what else we need to do. Discussions with our chairman as to what needs to get done and the priorities. So it's good to see everyone here knowing the importance, both on the chancellor level and the trustee level, but most important, at the various colleges, realize the opportunities that are there for their students to come in and become business enterprises. And in the construction industry, there is a great opportunity. I'll put that out there, among other businesses, of course. But most importantly, is making sure that the various schools, the various colleges, we support them in what they need to do to bring along the procurement for the businesses that are right here in New York. So we're very excited about, about the opportunities and the challenges, of course, that, especially now, that face the small businesses, and appreciate the chancellor and the growth that is out there that we can bring forward, especially, especially in these times. So thank you and honored to be the chair of the MWBE and for SDVOB. So thank you again. So any other questions? Please, Asante.
I have a comment. I think the mentorship is a really good idea because there's a lot of businesses that are in students now and alumnis, and it'll only just make CUNY bigger and better to let them know that CUNY backed you up. You also graduated, but we backed you up on this. So, and a lot of students don't even know we exist. So I think the conference is good. We need to push it more for students, because I can say, hey, listen, this is what's happening, but it's not going across the board. So I think the mentorship is a really good idea.
Thank you.
If I could add to that, I think what's exciting is that there's value even for the students taking it to whatever future careers they have, right? Something that they're learning, opportunities that maybe those businesses don't have that they can bring in, and that can be another angle in terms of sharing it as a support.
That's very key. And of course, we turn every, every single corner with facilities to make sure that all the procurement, by the way, bids, have a requirement for MWBE, SDVOB, and also making sure that those are followed up too, which is, which is key for the capital programs that we have. Just any other questions, thoughts, comments? All right, then. Then with no further items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do we have a second? Yay, okay. Meeting is adjourned.
We have, we're running a few minutes late, so we need everybody to.